The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I am Ken Tyler, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the May 19th Special Board Meeting. We have two items on the agenda. There will be no citizen participation for this meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website and broadcast live on Channel 21. We're also recording this meeting so that it can be access, sorry people, on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month of Channel 21. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you're not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During my moment of silence, I prayed for focus. I'll try to get back here. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Approval of the fiscal '23 operating budget. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. So Board members, as part of our annual budget process, the Board must approve the operating fund by, budget by category, the food service fund budget and the debt service fund budget. We also bring the capital improvement fund budget before you as well. With that, I'm going to ask Mr. O'Neill to walk through those various budgets for you and for our community and then for vote. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lockard, and good afternoon, Board members. And you've spent quite a few sessions on your budget throughout the FY '23 budget preparation process, so this is generally the meeting where we would bring any updates from your last discussion, which was in April, answer any of your remaining questions, and then ultimately, you need to, by law, approve for your operating budget, your major state categorical totals, your food service fund, and your debt service. And then as a matter of form, as Dr. Lockard said, also at the end, we always ask you to approve your capital project totals, which are simply the result of how much funding you got from the state and the county for each of those projects. Before I start, I would really quickly like to thank the staff here, Mr. Burke, our brand-new CFO, who we brought through right into the middle of the budget process for his help and support, Mr. Sexton, who I believe is here in the room as well, our supervisor budget, and Mr. Cannon for helping prop me up throughout this process and keep the parts moving. And I'd like to thank all these folks who came to see my presentation today. That's great. As you know, this is your ongoing revenue, and this hasn't changed since April, so you're looking at an increase of $8.4 million from the county in ongoing revenue and $10.2 million from the state under the new blueprint formula. And there's a footnote there or a note there. Today at their session, and so this is one of those updates from April, today at their session across the street, the county commissioners voted on top of the $8.4 million of ongoing revenue to also provide the Board of Ed with $2 million of one-time funds in fiscal '23 with the stated hope that those funds could be applied to one-time employee compensation. And as this presentation unfolds, you'll see that that's what we've planned to do here. So that's kind of the summary of the revenue. Again, here's a closer look at the county revenue. You can see the current fiscal year adopted amount in the county budget and the amount ongoing for FY '23. It's a percentage change of 4.1%. And then the, as of today, the $2 million in one-time funds. Generally, some questions about how many positions are being authorized in terms of your budget actions, so we always like to take a moment and share that in this budget that you'll be hopefully approving here in a minute. There is an increase of some FTE associated with the expansion of pre-K that we've talked about many times now. That's been required sort of under the blueprint phase-in and now will be required further under the blueprint itself. Mr. Wernick has presented this plan to you in prior sessions. Those six FTE breakout to, I believe, four and a half teaching FTE and one and a half assistant FTE. And then, as we've also discussed in the past, we are, the Career and Tech Project is underway. Phase one is wrapping up, and that overall footprint will increase the square footage of the building. We tried desperately to maintain a ratio of custodian per a certain amount of square foot in terms of cleaning and maintenance, and so we were adding two FTE of custodian specifically because of the increased size of that project. And then the third item here is not a change in FTE, but in terms of what you'll adopt today, hopefully, there is a change in how we intend to fund the 24.6 FTE that are already being funded this year using ESAR money. Originally, we were planning to fund those same 24.6 FTE for one more year, again with ESAR money in fiscal '23. Because of some things with changes in federal grants and information from the state, we're actually proposing that instead of using ESAR money to fund those positions, we use Board of Ed fund balance to fund those positions in fiscal '23 and use the ESAR money that was being applied to those positions to cover some things that we have talked about before. The, I don't want to say shortfall, but the decline in Title I aid from the state pass-through money and some funding we need to apply to the special ed program just for next year. And so those should be, hopefully, one-time costs, and all this is doing is changing how those existing positions are funded, not adding those positions to your existing totals.
So, Mr. O'Neill, before you move on, can we just clarify that? Because I think that this is a point of contention with the commissioners potentially, based on some discussions I had earlier today. The 24.6 teachers, those were funded through ESAR funds, like you said, and we're moving this around a little bit because of some allocations of other items that we'll get to in a minute. But this is one-time money, and we're not saying that we're funding these positions that are intended to be ongoing positions with one-time money. These are, in fact, short-term positions that were funded by ESAR dollars that we're now going to use one year, we're going to reallocate and use one year of fund balance dollars to fund those, right? It's not that we're saying we're funding ongoing positions with one-time dollars, with these 24.6. I just want to make that very clear.
That's very clear.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That's correct. And if I could add, like a handful of other things that we've done with one-time funds in terms of positions, we've done it because we don't have any other way to do it, and it's been a significant need to support our students and our schools. And that's why we have to use one-time money sometimes to target where we have the greatest needs in our schools, to support our teachers and our students. We'd rather have it be ongoing, but we don't, we're not able to accomplish that based on the funding we receive.
Right. Those were positions that we, the Board of Ed, authorized, filling those positions, to help with the pandemic situation.
Correct.
It was to, you know, with quarantines and sicknesses and issues with, you know, staffing during the pandemic, we had authorized hiring those additional positions to help out. And this year, they were used primarily as the quarantine coaches and additional interventions.
Absolutely. And, you know, to my memory, you, the Board, because who remembers the height of the pandemic? I do. You, the Board, actually had authorized hiring additional positions sort of to just get through the year, to keep schools staffed and open. The ESAR money came in maybe even a little bit after that, and suddenly we had a source to try to handle that. But if we did not have these positions, and we could have used more, it would have been, I don't know that, well, I'm safe saying, we would not have gotten through the pandemic. And to your, you brought up the quarantine coaches. They're funded in this fiscal year, fiscal '22 with ESAR money. There's no funding available for them for next year. And so we're, Human Resources was working on ways to place folks, and we have applied for some grants to try to maybe continue some of that service to kids. But if we don't have funding, we can't continue, you know, we can't continue that service, and we have to take the actions necessary to, you know, to put things back in balance. And that's what will happen at the end of this, next year, if there's not funding to keep them or if the Board has a different priority.
And we indeed improved, we approved doing that, knowing that these positions will go away. Maybe not the individual in the position, maybe through attrition, maybe through whatever, they may still be in the system, but these positions, we knew they were temporary.
Exactly. So they're funded for one more year, right, through either ESAR funds or now through our fund balance, they're funded for one more year. And then, like you said, you know, that's a decision that needs to be made next year at this time of what happens with those particular positions and as it rolls into the blueprint and every other decision that we need to be making, right?
And originally, wasn't it for more positions?
You had authorized us to hire up to 50 teachers to kind of get through the height of those staffing challenges. We, and, you know, it's fluid. People come and people go, and in this climate, maybe that's been a little more pronounced than historically it might have been. So we may have fired, hired 50 people total, but this is sort of the balance that it kind of stabilized to be, that we could continue with 24.6 FTE through the next couple of years. And they've been well-served, not just for coverage, but for addressing class sizes, issues as it's popped up at a school here or there, but mainly for providing services to students who had been not in school for a while and who were coming back and the challenges that all of us faced through those couple of years.
And I would like to make sure that everybody understands it's called the blueprint now, and Kerwin is gone.
Right. And to your last point, Mr. Kyler, about, you know, next year, like, so we're never going to have to let anybody go, right? I mean, it's for the 24 positions, so an average year turnover is about 100 teachers, right? So we just wouldn't hire some of those FTE back, right? Like, if we decided that the 24 positions wouldn't roll forward, right?
True of this, true of the Title I funding issue, we'll develop plans to, you know, if it's clear that there's not going to be revenue and/or the Board of Ed should have different priorities as we look to a fiscal '24 budget, then Mr. Diaz, others working with him would have a plan to place folks so that hopefully attrition would take care of anyone who wants to remain with us, and we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't reduce in force, we wouldn't actually cut an individual out of the system unless we had, you know, unless we absolutely had to at the end of the day. Similar, on a similar thought, that, at least for the last couple of years, anytime we're recommending to you to use some of your one-time revenue, we like to pull those out and highlight them for transparency's sake, even though they may be, because when you vote on your categories, the money has to be in the right place in the right state category. So we like to sort of pull out one-time fund uses so that that's highlighted for you and for the public as well. And so these would be the planned uses of Board of Ed fund balance, so one-time revenue that you are supplying in fiscal '23. The first item there, three years ago, you approved the use of fund balance as a three-year bridge and identified some positions that you thought were priority needs in the school system. They fall basically into health and security or safety, and then technology support. You turned out to be very prophetic because then a pandemic came, and all three of those areas that you identified in advance of a pandemic as priorities for our system. You know, quite frankly, I'm not sure how we could have gotten through those years without the people we put in those roles as well. But you committed for three years, fiscal '23 would be the last of the three years, and so we would apply $817,000 to continue those nine FTE for that year. And during your next budget session season, you'll have to determine what your priorities are here and how we can handle this. Then there's some one-time money. We want to move from fund balance to look at some one-time employee costs and just even as we hopefully are coming out of the pandemic to address some school coverage issues, and that would total $370,000. Capital outlay would be, you have a history of proactively funding some of your local project accounts to address the needs of your facilities or your facilities, and so we'd like to move some money there for an intended purpose of our, of your real estate. And then, again, this is the same thing being shown here. If we're going to move the ESAR money to cover the federal grants, this is where you're, we're showing you that you're moving exactly that amount of money from your fund balance to cover those 24.6 FTE. At your last business meeting, which might have just been last week or two weeks ago, perhaps, you approved, when you approved, the transportation reimbursement formula, the way in which we pay the bus contractors who provide our bus service to our students. You approved using fund balance as a bridge to make the contractors whole on the administrative allotment part of the fund balance. There was a committee report, as you know, and one of the recommendations was to graduate the administrative allotment per bus from a certain amount to a new final amount, but we felt like we needed to phase that in in increments over five budget years. You basically approved giving the contractors that full amount now, which was the goal, and using your fund balance as an annual bridge for four years so that there's no impact to your ongoing operating budget until you get to that point where it's fully phased in. So that's the first year of that phase-in process being applied from your fund balance. And then, per their discussion and their wishes, we would take the $2 million of one-time funding that the commissioners made available today and apply that to one-time employee compensations, which of course, as we all know, and the commissioners articulated, they understood, is subject to collective bargaining with your five employee groups. But hopefully this, if they watch this, this would serve to show them that we're honoring the intent that they stated when they discussed it today.
Yeah, and, Mr. Kyler, I was just going to say, they made kind of a big production out of that at the meeting this morning, but I would say that it's always been our intent, you know, to provide any additional funds for employee compensation. I think we've said that loud and clear at every single one of our meetings and every single one of our requests, so just, yeah.
And I would never speak for a bargaining unit. There's people quite capable that do that. I know they're not big fans of one-time money versus ongoing, but please recognize, we're going to try to give you what we get.
Okay, so that sort of summarizes all of the moving points, including the new information for today. And now, I'll kind of pause for a moment to come back to the stated purpose. On the next few slides that I'll display, we would be going over your final budget totals and then the categorical totals, which are what you must approve by law, followed by your food service fund, your debt service, and then your capital project account amounts. So I'll click, and if you, Mr. Kyler?
Dr. Dorsey, Ms. Herbert, Ms. Patagia, any other questions on the details of it or any of the points?
I just wanted to say one thing. Diane Grody's driving a bus today because they, people have to cover, I mean, they're having trouble getting bus drivers, so. And, you know, we talked about the death last, that was last week or something? They said, forget that. It, well, not forget it, but it would be better use if you went from seven to 6.5. So I just wanted to bring that out for them because they, nobody could come here today because they're all driving buses. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's it.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay.
I did want to make one other additional comment, so, I mean, based on changing discussions have been had over time, there's a lot of moving parts to all of this. So I just want to thank staff for keeping us apprised of all the changes as they're happening and trying to make sure we understood all of the moving parts and, you know, that we're using. There really have been some creative solutions that have come out of all of these discussions in terms of how to use ESAR funds, how to use one-time funds, making sure we're not supplanting any potentially available grant money. There's just been a lot of moving parts, and I just want to thank staff for all their hard work and efforts and, you know, keeping us apprised of those possibilities.
Thank you on their behalf, and they're hearing that, so.
Yes, and I know, and you guys are trying to teach me, but I know three and a half years ago, I had no understanding of the amount of grants and how the grants can be used and how they cannot be used, and, Ms. Vigna, you're right. It's, and like today, you guys can even quickly react. Ms. Herbert?
I want to thank you all too, but also, people don't understand, we have a lot of restricted money, and that makes a big difference. And it's, for me being on the board as long as we, I've been on the board and being a teacher, it's still amazing what all these numbers are, but you've got stricted, non-restricted, and it just keeps on going. So sometimes it's very, it can be complicated, so.
It can, and, you know, to be fair, it can. In the last couple of years, there's always been grant money restricted, and then with federal money and the blueprint being phased in came with monies that, you know, depending on which day you asked the state, maybe weren't restricted, but they kind of were by program, so.
And people have to understand that, that, you know, we are being watched and we must follow guidelines, so.
But we're very audited.
Yes, and we are. And again, thank you, Drew and Rob and everybody else that helped, because this was a joint effort this morning, for sure.
And I wanted to say thank you too. You know, I mean, I think it, every year, you know, we go through this process and, you know, come to find out, you know, the state really doesn't chip in as much to us as they do other counties, and what we do with the funding we receive is incredible. And I think it shows how amazing our school system is, especially, you know, what our teachers do with what they have and how they make it work, how our other staff helps, how, you know, our assistants, everyone. Everyone does what they need to do with what we have, and we make it work, and again, it just shows how wonderful our school system is and how well we work.
And it just makes me think of early days of principalships, how, again, you learn about the categories and the objects and the sub-objects, so, you know, seeing it all come together and how it's all, again, categorized appropriately. So again, we did it certainly at the school levels, and then again, once you all compile it all at the system level, we see all these high amounts and these high numbers. But again, you know, every dollar, I think, can certainly be traced and, you know, is well-spent, you know, for the instruction of our students. So again, I hear that you certainly had to work quickly to pull things together after the additional funding this morning, but again, I too am very appreciative of how you've worked to pull it together for us.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. For the record, all I said was work quickly, and then other people did.
Well, and sometimes you certainly delegate, and it all gets done is the main thing.
I'd like to thank, I added something to the effort. To a lot of the points you just made, this isn't where you'll vote, but here's kind of a summary because I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I can't let this opportunity go by with echoing what everybody said, but John, you're being a little modest there. You know, John and his team do a phenomenal job of making all these numbers work, and as in the case of today, which was a good thing to have to do, quickly moving to take the additional one-time funds to support our budget moving forward. So thank you, John, as well as the team, as everyone has mentioned. I just didn't want you to sell yourself short right there.
Thanks.
And since we're all jumping on, Dr. Lockard, you too. I mean, I've seen you guys do the presentations and ask for additional questions. Sometimes you didn't get them and you didn't have to answer them, but that's not your fault. But yes, it's, as Dr. Dorsey said about a school and being a principal, it's top-down, but a lot of hard work.
Sure. Thank you sincerely. Thank you. And just before we move to the categories themselves broken out for your vote, I think Mrs. Herbert mentioned there's some restricted money, and we don't tend to spend a ton of time talking about that publicly because you don't have discretion in how you spend it. You get restricted funds, usually in the form of grants, for a stated purpose, and you must use them for that purpose. And we're audited to make sure we use them for that purpose, and so they come in and they're applied for those reasons, but they're not sort of the things you have discretion over. But here is your budget, non-restricted and restricted side by side, and you do see the categories there, which will be highlighted separately in a moment. And so there's, you know, $44 million in restricted funds there. And, you know, again, the last couple of years, there's been a little bit of been a little bit of flux with that. So maybe that'll settle out over over the next few years. And then here's a breakout of all of the sources of revenue. That includes the ongoing money figure we showed earlier, the the $2 million in one-time money that was approved today, in-kind money, for anyone wondering, that that's sort of when the county provides us with with an asset such as the Kessler facility that we use for warehousing or the outdoor school at Hoshua, which is their their real estate, their property. In our budget, it shows an in-kind amount. So it's sort of accounting for the fact that, you know, they're they're providing that to us for our use. And then there's your the grand total of the uses of fund balance that we previously showed on the screen a little bit ago, your state aid under the blueprint, federal money, which is, you know, that makes up most of that grant or restrictive funds from the other side. And then other is a collection of a lot of little things. You know, you do get tiny bits of revenue in other ways, and they all add up to to about that number. I'm trying to think of some off the top of my head, athletic fees and and things like that, and perhaps interest on your your bank accounts and and that kind of a thing. And so there's your your collection of revenues adding up to the total. And these are the seven, well, there's not 17, but these are the categories numbered as they are in the state education law and required for every Board of Ed, us included, to adopt, you know, to adopt final categorical totals. And, you know, that's the hard work that you were referring to that your staff completed today, taking these items that you've approved and prioritized and worked on, and then making sure that 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 amount of revenue finds its way into the proper state categories for your adoption so that the money's used in the way it's supposed to be used and intended to be used throughout the coming school year. So this is the first place where I would pause and say to you, if you're prepared, you would take action to approve these major categorical totals.
Board members, any additional questions or comments? So we we should have a separate motion for each each budget. So.
Okay.
So can I get a motion to approve the operating budget?
I motion.
Dr. Dorsey was.
First.
Second quicker.
I'll do second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Very good. And then next, as you as you know, the food service program is sort of like an enterprise fund. It funds itself through its delivery and its and its sales. And you need to approve your food service fund as a single action item as well. And we, I don't want to stop doing this. Mrs. Sarno came to us some years ago, and and she and her staff have really done wonders with our food service program and brought it to a place where it was not, you know, it was sort of in some financial trouble to a plate of great place of great solvency. And she's now working on updating the capital aspects of her program and some positive things with that employee association as well. So kudos to Karen. And if you're prepared, you would approve that total.
Okay.
Could I now get a motion to approve the food service?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? And and I I just want to mention quickly, which has nothing to do with the budget. Like you say, that's, this has been a great group, and and she's done a great job managing it. They were out in the parking lots giving out food. They've been doing so much. And and they get some grants and stuff, too, but they do they do stuff in a very profitable way.
With a ton of volunteers from the community.
Yes, you're right. You're right. They they get volunteers, too. And and once in a while, they invite the volunteers and do some great lunches.
So Mr. Kyler, can I ask a a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
Just just on the food service. I mean, so completely echo all the comments about what a what a great job Ms. Sarno has done and over the past year during some very difficult times. But the the face of that budget is probably going to change pretty dramatically over the next couple of years. Correct?
Yes. And I, you know, sadly, I didn't have a moment to grab Karen today and ask her if she's heard anything more recent. But during the pandemic, there were relaxation of the federal regulations so that any student who wanted a meal could receive a meal without without charge. And but yet we're being reimbursed for every meal sold. And so the fund has been, the fund was solvent and healthy before then, but it is certainly very solvent and very healthy over the last couple of years. The last I had heard, there was no change to the, meaning there was no expectation that the federal regulatory relaxation would necessarily continue forward into another year. And I apologize for not having the foresight to ask her earlier today. But the last I heard was it was likely we would revert to the original regulatory scheme next year.
Okay. So but we're in a very strong solvency position that over the next year, regardless of how things change, we should be in pretty good shape. But but next year, some more difficult discussions or decisions may need to be had.
Perhaps, but so strong that the state's even saying, you're you're so solvent, we want to talk to you about your plans to use this fund. And so we have the capital items in the works and some things that'll happen, hopefully, in collective bargaining with that group. So yes, very, very strong position.
Okay.
And can I just ask, I mean, the assumption, I think, would be that since all students were provided or had the opportunity to get a free meal, that the participation rate would have increased. Is that the case?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And it would be, you know, so if, yeah, I mean, I don't want to elaborate. If you want to find the brightest place or two in the pandemic, that's one of them. And it's kind of a shame to to revert from that. But I also understand that regulations are what they are. But yeah, that was kind of a pleasant side impact of the whole situation.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We now need a motion to approve the debt service budget.
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Debt service, as you know, is the amount of money that the county funds to sort of pay your mortgage, if you will, or pay the the bonding on projects that were part of public school construction. And so this isn't a number that you or I or anyone has any control over. This is a number that Mr. Zaleski provides that is your your real-life debt service. But nonetheless, you do need to legally approve that number.
Ms. Herbert? When will man's value be paid for?
Mr. Zaleski guesses 10 years. And and just if I may, why not? I'll speak for Ted. You know, you can't necessarily base something on construction date and assume a 15- or 20-year bond period because they they make decisions, just like you make decisions, priorities, where a project could be paid partially with cash or transfers from other projects, et cetera. So it may not be bonded in the year that it is constructed. And the same is true from the state, by the way. They don't necessarily begin bonding, you know, the minute they commit to a construction project. Sometimes those can linger over longer periods of time.
Ms. O'Neil, I I caught the tail end of a discussion from the commissioner meeting this morning where they were talking about capital projects. And there were some statements made about the Oklahoma Road HVAC replacement, and I believe the North Carroll Middle Roof replacement projects.
Correct.
Is that, do those discussions impact any of this or from a timeline perspective?
They, let me look. They are here from a local perspective. So I'm assuming you've made the decision to move them up in priority based on the discussion from the state. So well, let me, well, do you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun a second. I'm sorry. We'll take the vote on the debt service one. Yep. They're related, but not the same.
We can get more detail next. And any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now need a motion for the CIP budget. So Ms. Savigny can ask her question.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So as I mentioned at the top, just as a matter of form, I think for the last three or maybe even four years, we've brought you the project, well, we've showed you the project totals. And then on the next slide, you you vote on the total allocations, just so that it's on record. But, you know, you develop your CIP in October, it goes to the county and the state. It goes through the county budget process. It goes through the general assembly process, and then you you end up with totals. So you don't really have a ton of control over these final numbers except to ask and advocate. But just just to be formal, we will ask you to vote on them. And then to Ms. Savigny's question, I think we shared this a couple of times. I'm pretty sure it was on the agenda as well for the joint, the most recent joint meeting with the commissioners. And I'll try to be quick. But one thing that we all were sort of aware of as we moved forward with Career and Tech in East Middle was there might be a likelihood that the state committing so much to those two big projects might not be able to do as much on smaller projects like system renovations, HVAC roofs, et cetera. That's turning out, at least right away, to not be as true as we thought or as a bigger concern as we thought. So during during the current year, at some point, the state approached Mr. Prokop, Mr. Kane, Mr. Marx, and said, you know, some of the pools of funding that we have that we've never, we've never heard that we were eligible for, we could be eligible for if we applied. And we did. And in the middle of the year, the state moved forward and funded Spring Garden HVAC with their share and Westminster High Window Replacements. Those were projects that the county had previously committed funding for. So they were just sort of waiting for state funding to show up. That showed up, sort of a little bit surprisingly to us, but a good surprise. And those projects move into design. And then more recently, as in nearing the end of the general assembly time period, the state reapproached and said, hey, we think if you submitted North Carroll Roof Replacement and Oklahoma Road HVAC Replacement, we might also have some more money for you in in the Healthy Schools Facility Fund, I think, is sort of the separate pot of money, the official title of it. And so our folks would have contacted Ted and his folks and talked about, do you, you know, would you like to think about moving those up in priority? You can see the totals appearing here now. And so we would anticipate that the state, after we go through the application process, would also grant their share of funding for those two projects. And they would move into design next year as well. And then between your two major modernizations and all of these unexpected renovation projects, we'll be having conversations next year of a different good problem, which is we don't necessarily have as many project managers suddenly as we have projects to manage. So that's that's been the the change over this fiscal year out of the state. And of course, the state, if you think back to the legislative discussion, set an all-time record for capital funding this year. So as Mr. Kyler sometimes says to me, the government will build. That's one thing they do, and they're they're doing that in full force. So these are all of the all of the monies for for projects, some some of which there's a share of the state to come, some aren't. So like, general paving, technology, relocatables, aging, well, the first I mentioned, those are locally funded projects only. So that's money coming from the county. Aging schools is a state-only source of funding, and so there's not a local part to that. But these would be the project totals resulting in, project amounts resulting in these revenue totals. And this is what we would ask you to consider voting on to make it formal.
Maybe related, I don't know if Ms. Savigny still has some questions. But we have some geothermal, and everybody loves HVAC until it doesn't work. But when we when I see an HVAC project, I'm thinking it's probably on a rooftop. Does that mean following these, there's going to be roof repairs? Does that mean these are priority because it would be foolish to fix the roof and then and then work on the HVAC? How does that relate in this?
We've always done our best to synchronize roof replacements and HVAC upgrades so that they follow in proper succession to not create, as you're describing, a problem. I have to see if Ray is in the room to know if that's the plan. And that would be the plan here as well, to do those in succession so that there's no, no issues.
Yeah, I think we've seen that for several projects now for the last several years, is we do the HVAC one summer, and then the following summer, we do the roof.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Click ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Approval of personnel appointment.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Kyler, before we move on, could I could I make a couple of comments?
Yes, budget-related.
Okay, budget-related comments.
Don't budget.
So it's not impacting the the vote on anything that we took today. I just wanted to make a a couple of comments. So I happened to to watch the the commissioner meeting this morning because I knew the discussions that they were going to be having and and potentially voting on some budget revisions. But I wanted to address and correct some very disturbing statements that were made by a couple of the commissioners this morning. Some of those statements showed a complete lack of respect and dignity for our elected county leaders and some of our staff here at CCPS. First, I'd like to address Mr. Fraser's comments regarding the members of the of our Board of Education. Commissioner Fraser said this morning that, and I quote, "The leadership at the Board of Education is abysmal. I think they do a terrible job." Those were his exact words. So I encourage all community members to watch the video of the commissioner meeting, if you get a chance, to see for themselves. It is posted online. And just to unpack that for a second, first, to publicly criticize and demean a fellow elected board is completely unprofessional and shows a complete lack of respect for our county leaders. It not only shows poor leadership, but it shows poor boardsmanship. It's just another time when Mr. Fraser has gone public with criticisms, and not during our joint meetings, when we have a chance to discuss these issues and potentially defend ourselves from these types of comments. It's just been, you know, when it's just the commissioners discussing. And I think enough is enough. And regarding our so-called terrible decisions, the Board of Ed voted to, I think what they were referring to is our votes to reopen schools when the commissioners were advocating for extending lockdowns. And, you know, they they ignored the truths that lockdowns were harming our kids, causing academics to greatly suffer, causing severe mental health issues, causing increases in substance abuse and suicides. So if leading the state in helping our students and families and communities, like, open our schools and get back to normal a little bit, then so be it. You know, like, if, you know, we were 100% right in in our decisions to reopen schools and get masks off of our kids. And the commissioners were dead wrong to support the lockdowns and the way that they went about that. So if they want to, it, I just think it was completely unprofessional for them to play politics with our students and community so that they could gain favor. I I think it was just totally out of line. And the next thing I wanted to address was some comments that Commissioner Wance made. While I'd like to thank him for not specifically attacking the Board of Ed, like Commissioner Fraser did, I would like to clear up several statements that were made this morning. So Commissioner Wance stated that there was a one-plus-five-year budget that was agreed upon and that it was excellent. And on that point, I completely agree. For reference, that agreement was made in 2019, right? And then, so Commissioner Wance fails to acknowledge that in 2020, the commissioners went MOE on the Board of Ed and didn't meet our mutually agreed-upon budget for the one-plus-five years. They cut the BOE budget, and that's a simple fact. In addition, the commissioner never saw a decrease, the commissioners never saw the decrease in revenue that fiscal year that they were expecting from the pandemic. So the additional $4 million that we've been requesting in the budget in 2021 and again in 2022 was simply to bring the budget back to the original agreed-upon amount, right? To claim that the Board of Ed just keeps asking for more and more money, you know, not in alignment with the the five-year budget that we'd agreed upon, is disingenuous at best. So this board has been consistent in our simple request that the commissioners make good on their original commitment to funding, the funding made prior to COVID. The next point that I want to address is that Mr. Wance went after Superintendent Lockard. He ridiculed our CCPS leader for making the statement that we'll take whatever funds you can give us to try to help fund additional compensation for our employees. And in the context of the commissioners cutting the budget, the superintendent was just doing his job to ask for as much of the budget that they were all previously agreeing to. As a board member, I can't state sternly enough that the condescending tone that they took with our leader of our top-rated school system, by the way, in the state was out of line. If you have a problem with the superintendent, commissioners, you need to come to the Board of Ed. The superintendent schools works for us and will address any issues that may arise. But publicly attacking CCPS leadership for doing their job crosses a line that I'm going to 100% back our CCPS superintendent, whoever that may be now or in the future. Next, regarding the budget, Commissioner Wance stated that CCPS does not provide you with the budget how you want to see it, and quoted that we kept repeatedly saying that it was because it's too complicated. It's just ridiculous. The the Board of Ed and CCPS complies with every state-manded law on the development and presentation of the budget. and presentation of the budget. It is 100% transparent. The breakout for each major category in the budget book breaks out the salaries for the groups of employees in that category. And all of our salary scales for each bargaining unit are available online every year. If you want to know how much a teacher makes or a nurse makes, it's online. You can go look it up. It's not complicated. And to insinuate that CCPS and the Board of Ed is somehow hiding money or misleading in our use of funds is downright offensive. If there's a specific format that the commissioners would like to see, you just have to ask. It's not complicated and we'll give it to you. The simple truth is that you didn't ask and we never said it was too complicated. One final point is that both Commissioner France, Commissioner Fraser and Wance stated that CCPS hired ongoing employees by using one-time money. Well, the reason that we did that was because, you know, we had very specific resource needs to address. Those are the nine employee, nine FTEs that we saw in the, the budget discussion earlier. And we also talked about the, the 24.6 FTEs that we hired in order to address specific pandemic-related concerns and issues. And they are indeed funded with one-time funds as we demonstrated today and we have been talking about repeatedly. So to clarify, it's only those nine positions out of 4,000 employees total. And those positions will be addressed, will, will determine how we need to address them next year, once the one-time funds have run out. So, and I'd also like to remind the commissioners that since several of us have been on the board, it's been, we've not missed a single step with our teachers. It's been six years in a row and soon to be seven. This Board of Ed pays our teachers and all of our employees based on the amount of money that we are funded. And during that same time, the commissioners have dropped the amount that they fund CCPS as a percentage of our overall budget. So we're simply making the tough decisions that we need to make. They stated many times today that they have to make very tough decisions over on the county side. Well, we've had to make some very tough decisions on our side as well. And we're not gonna, we're not going to berate them and degrade them on the decisions that they make and we expect the, the same respect from them towards the, the work that this board and this staff is doing. So I am very personally thankful to the commissioners for the additional one-time funding that they voted for today, but I simply felt the need to defend this Board of Ed and CCPS leadership and staff against what I thought were some very bullying and harassment type of remarks. So just wanted to set the record straight. And at the end of the day, say, you know, I hope we can all do better as elected leaders. Let's not degrade and disrespect each other. Let's have, have open and honest conversations. And at the, but at the end of the day, I am very thankful for the additional funds that were provided. And I think that, that will go a long way with helping us trying to compensate our employees as best we can. So just wanted to, to make those comments. Thank you, Mr. Kyler, for affording me the time.
Thank you. And I was at work this morning, did not watch the meeting and it's disappointing to hear that. I, I want to just piggyback with one comment and beyond that, I'll address it if it comes up at future meetings. But I do not like the untruthfulness. And while I don't live on social media and, and because I like a group on social media, I'm not a member, my gosh, the Lines Club, I try to help them with fundraisers. I ask them, please don't send me dues, I'm not a member. But there's also been dishonest comments made in closed groups by one of the commissioners and I really would appreciate if that could stop. It, it just doesn't help either side. And, and, and lastly, and before me probably with Mrs. Herbert and Ms. Savigny, I think we work very hard to do quarterly meetings and foster communications with the commissioners. And I hope this isn't a step backwards because my humble opinion, Carroll County Public Schools attracts a lot of residents to Carroll County. You guys work very hard. You guys work very hard and we're a good system. And, and it should be a highlight, not a negative of this county. And in turn, we need their funding. We need Parks and Rec and the law enforcement and the fire protection and everything else they do. So I, I hope we can be mutually respective. And, and please don't bash again Dr. Lockard and may I say this a little more next month, but thank you for what you've done for us, including what you've done requesting budget money. You haven't, you haven't been here during the best times of school systems. But again, when we made our decisions, which again, I'll say science proved that everyone was right, you didn't always agree with us. You told us you didn't agree with us, which I totally respect. And then you implemented whatever we voted on. So you can't ask for more than that. And please, please don't bash him.
Yeah, and just one final comment. So Mr. Wance talked about, a lot about accountability today. And I just want to say that I, I think that we've been amazingly, we've really amazingly held ourselves accountable to the students and, and staff of, of the school system in this community. We have one of the top-rated school systems in the state and that is absolutely due to our amazing employees, our, our teachers, our educators, our assistants, our custodial staff, our food services staff, our A&amp;S. We just have an amazing group of people who pulled together during some really tough years. We've had to make some very tough decisions over time and we're now just trying to compensate our employees appropriately to, to pay them back for the amazing work that they've done. So I just want to say thank you to everyone in the school system. It's been a rough couple of years and you have risen to the challenge beautifully. And I don't want to see any of that disrespected and, and we're, we're doing our best to, to get the, the funding that we can. And thank you all for everything that you do for our kids.
Any other comments? Then I now need a motion for the approval of a personnel appointment.
So moved.
Dr. Dorsey?
I'll second.
And second. Do you mind? Okay. And typically I would say Dr. Lockard, but, and, and, and thank you for being here. And the Board of Education has many responsibilities, but none is more important than selecting a new superintendent for the school system. After conducting a comprehensive search and reviewing outstanding candidates, we believe we have found the best possible person for this position. Mrs. McCabe has been with Carroll County Public Schools for many years, has extensive knowledge of the school system and knows what is needed to guide us successfully into the future. She has served in the position of Chief of School since 2019. She has a total of 28 years in education with 21 of those years being in Carroll County Public Schools. Board members, any, any discussion from any of you before we vote?
We went through a long process and I think we each worked hard at it and we certainly received wonderful guidance from the MAVE Association that we had with us. So again, you know, I, I am just very pleased that we're at the point where we're ready to make a recommendation and, and move forward with it. And I think one of the things that is just really touching and, and helpful for me is seeing that, you know, we really do want to go back to a focus on academics and for making sure that our students are really each afforded access to all that we have to offer in the system because we have some wonderful, wonderful things to offer. You know, as far as the curriculum and the rigorous instruction and the resources. So we do want the very best for each of our students and, you know, we, we thank Dr. Lockard for, for leading us to this point and we certainly look forward to moving forward and, and focusing on the academic achievement and the overall wellbeing of each of our students.
Thank you.
We're ready.
Thank you. Ms. Herbert?
I will say that MAVE was absolutely wonderful. And when we started this process and we all went through this together, we all worked very hard and we came up with a united decision. And it is time now to get back to academics, reading, writing, arithmetic. It's been very difficult these last couple of years and we've been dealing with closed schools and masks and, and other things. And it, it's time to move on and we need to go forward and don't look back. We've got to continue to take care of our students in Carroll County and let's move forward.
Ms. Pataglia?
Dr. Lockard, I, I will say I am going to miss you. It's, um, it's been an extreme pleasure. You know, we have two more months with you here. You have done a phenomenal job with our system. You're a hometown boy and it, you know, everyone was so happy about that. Your dad had served and he was very well respected as well, as, as well as you. You will be missed and you have done a phenomenal job and you have led, you know, our school system in a phenomenal way. I'm excited that we are going to be hiring a new superintendent and some of you got to do this twice now and I get to do this one time hopefully. And I'm excited that we're making history in Carroll County. And I think that I'm really proud of that fact. I'm really proud that I got to be part of something that is incredible for Carroll County.
Ms. Savigny?
Well, I'll, I'll leave my comments about Dr. Lockard until next month because I have, I have so much that I want to say, but this, this is, this is an exciting time for the school system. I just want to say that I'm very excited for Ms. McCabe to step into this role. I think you did an absolutely amazing job during the interview process. I'm excited about your entry plan. I'm excited about your vision for the future of this system. It's been a very tough couple of years and, and you were unwavering in your, you know, your push for making things better during the pandemic, trying to figure out what is the best way to serve our students and, and pushing those things forward. And we appreciate that. But now, now we're going to turn, turn the, the page on that and hopefully be, be past a lot of the pandemic stuff and get back to the basics of academics and academic achievements and setting high expectations for our kids because we know they can meet them and then we need to give them the resources to get there. And I truly believe in your vision and, and your plans for the system. And I just want to say, like, while I agree with you about making, making history with having the first, you know, female superintendent for this county, I want to say, I, I don't want to take away from the fact that it had absolutely nothing to do with your gender. You are the right person for, for the job and we're excited to have you. And I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, one last word before we vote and Mr. Amelie, I kind of wrote some notes so I don't violate any confidentiality agreements, so hopefully I'll be okay. But I, I do want to emphasize, we, we had a number of good candidates. It was, it was, there were some tough people and, and some good people there. I feel we picked the best. I do want to, again, but this is effective July 1st, not, not when we vote, but I do want to say, I, I want to thank you for your four years of service for CCPS. They, they weren't easy years and I want to wish you best of luck in your future endeavors with both, both for you and your family.
Thank you.
And, and thank you. And, and I'll stop. I won't get in trouble. Now, oh, and before I tell everybody, I know everybody in this crowd behaves. I don't know what you normally do if you applaud or something, but right after this, we will make a motion to adjourn and then we can all really, really celebrate, provided you guys vote the way I think you're going to. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I would like to now welcome Mrs. McCabe as our new superintendent effective July 1st. And, and Mr. Amelie, we're okay to now adjourn and, and we don't have to leave the room, right?
You need to make a motion to approve the contract.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
What's on my agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract for the new superintendent?
So moved.
Dr. Dorsey was ahead of me.
And I'll suck it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Now, we vote and literally sign? Yep. Okay. Okay.
Before or after we adjourn?
Comments on the motion should be made now.
Okay.
But congratulatory comments.
Would be after we vote.
Okay.
So all those in favor of us signing the contract?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, we should do all that before we adjourn.
Yes.
That's still, that's still board business.
Yeah, she needs to make her comments before the pandemic contract first. I'm not sure I understand the nature of the comments that they're related to.
Mr. Amelie, we were going to ask Ms. McCabe to make a few comments.
So we should go sign, right?
Can we sign first or does she talk first? Sign first.
Let's sign.
And so Mrs. McCabe needs to sign. Her signature needs to be witnessed by Ms. Lucido. The board members need to sign. And Dr. Lockard, as the secretary of the board, needs to attest.
And, and then she can speak? Okay.
It's right there.
We all, we all need to get it.
And there should be two copies. And they're both like that.
Do you need a microphone? Will you be making comments?
I'm not.
Amen.
I was trusting you'd sign and I thought you could all sign. You know, me, I'm not legal.
Kenny can't read. He doesn't have his glasses, so Andy can't read the Russian. Yes. Sandy, get back over here and have a seat.
Thank you and good afternoon. Thank you, President Kyler, Vice President Pataglia, Dr. Dorsey, Ms. Herbert, Ms. Sevigny, and all of Carroll County Public Schools for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank my entire family for their support, encouragement, and sacrifice, especially my husband. If not for his support, I wouldn't be able to do the work that I'm doing. Further, I'd like to thank Dr. Lockard for his leadership over the past four years and the time he is spending with me to ensure a smooth transition. Finally, I would like to thank all the staff here in CCPS that I've been so fortunate to work with over the years. In good times and in challenging times, we've always worked together to try to do what was best for students. Your skills, partnership, honest feedback, and support have developed me as a leader. I've learned so much from each and every one of you. As some of you know, many years ago, I was hired by Dr. Chuck Ecker to an assistant principalship at Piney Ridge Elementary School. Dr. Ecker was a wonderful mentor to me, and his leadership continues to inspire me. Above everything else he taught me, it was the importance of personal integrity, including honesty, dependability, sound judgment, and a strong work ethic. I will work to live up to the standards he lived by and modeled in CCPS. I am honored and humbled to have the opportunity to continue to serve the students, staff, parents, and community of CCPS in this new role as superintendent. We've been through a rough few years handling the pandemic, but we all got through it together. I look forward to working with all stakeholders to get back to a clear focus on teaching and learning and on preparing our students for the future. Thank you very much.
Are we okay to stay standing and do a motion to adjourn?
Seven minutes.
Any discussion? Again, I just want to quickly say thank you for fellow, fellow board members, as, as you guys have done since I've gotten elected. Everybody pitched together, everybody worked. MAEBE was a great consultant. We ended up with unanimous decision, so thank you very much, and thank you, and thank you. And all those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.